All right, I'm gonna go ahead and get started. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Crown High School Community Work Session number three. We have a great presentation for you tonight. We have taken all the input from the past two meetings and come up with a few designs that we feel that incorporated all those comments. My name is Rob Batzdem there. I am the project manager for the Division of Construction. And I will be your main point of contact for this project. You can reach me on the website, similar to how you came to the webinar meeting. Tonight, we have with us on the MCPS team Seth Ferriano, Genevieve Floyd, Dennis Cross, Adrian Karamias, DJ Connolly. And I'm not, no, I don't see anyone else here? I'm not sure if Seth Adams is on the call tonight. But you can see on the screen, I'm not going to go through everyone's positions, but we do have a staff here that can answer a lot of questions. We also have our design team from Stan Tech here, and they will introduce themselves here in a minute. And we also have Keller Brothers, our construction manager on the call tonight. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dirk Jeffrey to introduce his team from Stan Tech.
Well, thank you, Rob, and good evening, everyone. To those on the call who've attended our previous who've attended our previous work sessions, welcome back. And thank you for hanging in there and for your continued support of the project. And for those who may be joining the work session process for the first time, welcome to you as well. And thanks for your interest in the project, and we look forward to hearing your ideas and insights about the designing concepts that we'll present this evening. My name is Dirk Jeffrey, Senior Principal with Stan Tech Architecture, and I'm joined by a fantastic team. Beginning with Matt Wagasback, our Senior Project Manager, Jasmine McDuffie, our Senior Project Architect, Wilfredo Rodriguez, our Senior Project Designer, and Heidi Liu, our Project Designer, and most of these people will be speaking tonight. Next slide, please. Our team is also joined by a number of specialty engineering and design consultants. Pulling off a high school requires a big team effort, and we're pleased to be joined by Clark Azar on our civil side, and I think Sean may be on the call tonight. Thank you, Sean, for joining us. But also structural, mechanical, electrical plumbing, fire protection, acoustics, things of that nature, all of these are represented by a very large and expert consultant team. Next slide, please. And then, as Rob mentioned, we also are pleased that Keller Construction Management is also a part of the team to offer their expertise in the pre-construction and construction phases of the project. So Dave and Steve, thank you as well for being on the call. Next slide, please. In terms of our virtual meeting format, tonight's meeting will be a bit different than before. The presentation is still being recorded and will be posted on the MCPS website, just as we've done in the past. But tonight, we're implementing a few changes to the question and answer protocol. And I'll take a moment just to explain that. To begin, you may have noticed when you logged on tonight that your microphone was muted. This means that you can also unmute yourself, which was not possible during our previous work sessions. Tonight, whenever you have a question, you may either raise your hand or type your question by clicking the appropriate icon on the menu bar. And just as a reminder, all you need to do to see this menu bar is to hover your cursor over the bottom of the screen on your device. So we'll open the floor for questions and comments once various portions of the presentation are complete. Then we'll call on you to ask your question by unmuting your mic, or we'll read it at that time if you posted it in writing. We just asked that when you're not speaking, to please keep your microphone muted to avoid any background noise distraction. And we hope that these changes make the work session process a bit more personal, a little less formal, and more engaging for all of us. And so, thank you in advance. Next slide, please. As Rob mentioned, Rob is the point of contact for all things related to the Crown High School project. And Rob, I'm sorry, and please be sure to visit the Crown High School project page on the Montgomery County website. Rob, anything further to add about this slide before we move on?
You know, want to mention that the previous recorded meetings are on that website. So if there's anything anybody missed, they can go back and take a look at that.
Great, thank you. Next slide, please. Again, just something I've talked about in the past, just to remind you in terms of the project schedule, we are currently in the schematic design phase. That's represented by the SD abbreviation there in the top left bar. Schematic design is still very early in the project process, as you can see by this bar chart. And it's also the time in which big ideas and multiple design options are explored. And that's what this community work session process is really all about, is helping us to hone in on a design concept that best addresses both facility needs of the instructional program and the desires of the community. And as you follow through the design process, you can see that the project will go under construction, is scheduled to go under construction, and just under two years from now, in the fall of 2023, and then to open in time for the beginning of the 26, 27 school year. Next, please. This is our community work session schedule. This is meeting number three. We have two in the can already, and we have one left after tonight. We'll talk more about our agenda tonight, but again, for those that have been part of the process, thank you so much for being part of the process, and those who are joining for the first time, thank you for hanging in there and being part of this one and the next one as well. All of the community work session, again, occurs during that schematic design portion of the project. And as you can see from this slide as well, that we are due to make a schematic design submission to the Board of Education in early February. And so, again, our work together is very critical. Next slide, please. And so, before we go any further, as we've done in the past, we would like to know who's on the call tonight. And so, as we've done in the past, we would like to launch a poll, a quick poll, and just to please, as it comes up on your screen, to please just indicate who you are and who you represent, just in terms of affiliation. So Jasmine, if you could, just then launch the poll, please.
I'll give it 20 more seconds. Thank you for participating.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Jasmine, and thank you to everyone for being here again. Okay, next slide, please. So in terms of our agenda tonight, we'll begin tonight by spending a few minutes reviewing the three design concepts presented last time and your feedback about them as it came to us through a number of surveys that we launched at our last meeting. And then we'll share with you how the design team and MCPS together have taken your feedback to develop the two new design concepts for your review that Rob mentioned earlier. Since our last meeting, the design team has met with MCPS on three occasions and have begun to make some decisions about the site layout and building location, again, based on your input. The two schemes that we'll see tonight are similar in many ways, and Jasmine and Wilfredo will walk us through them in detail in just a moment. The goal of our meeting tonight really is to gather your feedback about these two new schemes. Again, you'll see that they both occupy similar portions of the site, that the stadium and some of the amenities are in exactly the same place on both schemes, which, again, is to say that we are closing in on a preferred concept. Your feedback tonight about both of them, and again, we will open the floor for questions and comments about the schemes once they're presented. But your comments tonight will inform MCPS decision about which of the two we will further develop into the preferred design concept that will be carried forward into schematics. Again, and we will share that with you at our next meeting. And so, the next meeting will be a fully developed concept, floor plans and schematic renderings regarding architectural character and things of that nature. So we'll have much more detail about each of these, I'm sorry, about one of the two of these, again, based on the feedback that you provide tonight. And so, again, that's the goal of our meeting. And so, agenda item number two is a discussion of those two current schemes. And then we'll just wrap up at the end there. So that's the agenda. And so, next slide, please. Okay, Jasmine, do you want to walk us through the three concepts and what the survey results were?
Sure. So during our last meeting, we presented three design concepts to the community. They're all a little different in terms of where they placed the building, as well as some of those site amenities. Option one looked at a centrally located building with baseball softball fields along Morrison and a stadium near the forest conservation easement. Option two looked at a building that was centrally located but closer to Morrison Drive. Baseball fields were along Fields Road, and like option one, the stadium was located closer to the forest conservation easement. And option three looked at a building that was located in the northwest, northwest corner off of the corner of Morrison and Fields Road, with the stadium being off of Omega and Fields, and the baseball fields closer to the forest conservation easement. At the end of presenting each of these options, we asked for feedback from the community about some of what they thought were the strengths and weaknesses of those features, site features of each scheme. So we wanted to share with you some of that feedback. So for option one, you know, got a lot of strong feedback about the features for that particular option. Some of the stronger points were the access points for the drop off for visitors and students and parents off of Fields Road, as well as the access to bus loop and service off of Omega, and as well as strong feedback on the location of the building being centrally located and some of the pedestrian connections that were made. Some of the feedback about some of the least successful features was the location of the stadium relative to the parking, that being pretty remote. We presented option two, and again, we got a lot of good feedback from the community, and that feedback for this one, fewer successful features than the previous option, but the biggest one being the access of the bus loop off of Omega Drive. One of the features that the community felt was less successful was the location of the school being closer to Morrison Drive. And option three, a lot of positive feedback on the features of this site layout. The strong ones being the location of the building at the corner of Fields and Morrison. The distribution of the parking and having parking close to the stadium and the school, and the strong pedestrian connections that were made between the building site and the community. This one was interesting because in this scheme, there were equal votes in terms of the location of the stadium being off of Omega versus the forest conservation on the south. You know, based on this feedback, at the end of that discussion, we also asked the community to talk to us or give us feedback of what they felt were the positive features that could combine to create the most successful design concept for the new Crown High School. And what was some of the strong feedback on that question was, you know, the school location at the intersection of Morrison Drive and Fields Road, which was shown in option three. There were some equal support for the stadium in Zone B and in Zone C. Strong support for pedestrian connections to the community, as well as strong support for introducing principles of new urbanism. And, you know, with the stadium being pretty neutral, we ended up talking to MCPS about these results, as well as the results of the other polls. And we started to really look at how we could frame this new, go move forward with new design concepts. And so, you know, the feedback we received, you know, strongly noted that there was a preference for that does parent drop off and connections off of Field Road, or connections off of Field Road, as well as maintaining vehicular access off of Omega Drive. That feedback, you know, showed us that having distributed parking and having a parent queue off of Fields Road was very strong, and having, you know, staff parking distributed as well as service off of Omega. That feedback also looked at the entrance being located in a way that take advantage of a longer queue point. And that feedback supported looking at the orientation of our fields and really trying to place those in the best orientation possible. And so, that placed the stadium near Omega Drive, the fields closer to the forest conservation easement, and looking at a building that could be rotated, you know, slightly off, actually maybe 15 degrees, but really trying to locate a building in that central area. That feedback also talked about these strong pedestrian connections, and there's a number of opportunities along the green belt. There's some green spaces that we can make strong connections with, with the community in terms of a park location, and looking at opportunities off of Vermeer Avenue. Wilfredo, do you have anything that you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, I think that both of the schemes, all of these steps and elements are true for both of them. And I think that the biggest difference between the two options is really the placement of the building, and how do we weave that edge from the neighborhood between Morrison and the new site.
Jasmine, I would just add as well, before we go to the next slide, is how, what this feels like to me is really an urban planning exercise. You might think of a high school campus as an urban planning exercise in terms of land use, adjacent seas, and where are the cars, where are the people, where are the buildings, what's green and what's paved and so forth. And I think the diagram here begins to really, at least delineate a very clear organizational concept for the site. And so, that's the other thing I think that's grown out of this process as well, is a very clear idea about how the site can be zoned from a land use standpoint.
Thank you. And before we move on, if there's anyone that's joined us since our last poll, we like to get your affiliation as well. So we're going to launch a quick poll before we move on to presenting those next schemes. You only need to vote if you didn't get an opportunity to vote the first time. Wait another 15 seconds. Well, thank you for participating in the poll. And next, Wilfredo is going to walk you through the options that we've prepared based on the feedback that we received from the community during our last meeting. Wilfredo?
Thanks, Jasmine. Good evening, everyone. So, option one, site plan. I think that you saw all of those diagrams. All the site amenities are very similar in both schemes, so I want to just make that clear. But I think what is really important about this site plan, it makes a difference, is that this concept looks at a building that creates an edge, but also is a threshold, right? Essentially, it's an L-shaped building that reaches onto Fields Road, and it creates also a an edge right at Vermeer and around Morrison. And there is a gateway lobby that we're calling, which is essentially a really interesting space that takes you to the library and off to the entry and to the stadium, and we will see the plan later for that. The purple trapezoid is actually the addition, so the L-skin becomes a J when Phase Two is gone, and then that's the whole building, essentially it becomes closer to the edge of Fields. It creates a corner, but it also, it creates a really nice backdrop for the drop off. You see that you enter from Fields Road, right, and you have this queue, and you go around, you see where the asterisk delineates where the main entry is. From a wayfinding standpoint, it's very clear, right, where to go, where do you see this building? So, the building creates an edge, but it's also, there is a nice buffer of green in between Morrison and and the actual building. And like Jasmine said before, the main entry is from above. Then from Omega Drive, the staff parking, bus drop off, and service is up from there. And the actual drop off is actually closer to the building in this scheme. So those are your main vehicular access, but if you see the orange arrows, what we're trying to do is create this interesting network of pedestrian connections. So you can see how from Vermeer, there is a very interesting lobby space aligned on access. There's also what we're calling the Green Bell, which goes all the way through the neighborhood, ending in a very interesting path that takes you all the way to what we're calling a linear plaza, which goes all the way from Fields Road all the way to the forest conservation area. But what it does is connects all your site amenities, right, starting northeast from the stadium, then cascading down into the courts, and then baseball and softball, and ending in the forest conservator. So it's a very rational, very from a wayfinding sidebar, very clear connection, right, between all these site features. And all of those things will branch into the neighborhood. There anything to add?
Nothing to add, Wilfredo.
Wilfredo, can you stay up on your mic? I'm having a little trouble hearing you. Sometimes you fade now. Thank you.
And also, this is Adrian. I just, I saw a question go into the chat, but I just wanted to reiterate, Derek, I think we said that we would put the, if anybody has any questions, if they can put it in the Q and A, so that we don't have questions in two separate places, because I see there's a question in the chat, but there's also a question in the Q and A. So if everybody, anybody has a question while we're going through this, if you could put it in the Q and A, and then we will go through the Q and A and then say those questions and then answer them once we get to those points in the presentation.
Thank you, Adrian. Absolutely. We are not monitoring the chat, so please register your question in the Q and A and not the chat. So thank you, Adrian.
So from a mapping standpoint, you can see how the building, the majority of the building aligns east-west, which is ideally from a solar heat gain standpoint and glare, and there's a little leg, right, that's the one that branches into Fields that has some special problems. So zooming in into the level one, so you can see how we're trying to create and place some of the more public functions on this level. You can see how the asterisk marks the entry. That's where the main office will be, right, where the drop off is. But you can see how you have this long line of drop off. You can be drop off anywhere there, and you're safe into this L-shaped building that is welcoming you. As you enter in the main office where the linear plaza is, right, that takes you from the stadium, of course, but when you go in, you have the main office, you'll actually be looking down into the gym, so the gym will be one level below. And you can also keep going, and if you see at the center of the building, at the center, the auditorium entrance will be there. And then reaching all the way to Fields is where the library is, and see that the library will be kind of like this nice beacon reaching into Fields. So when you drive around, it will be very interesting to see, right? It will be a little bit more transparent than other spaces, so it will become this kind of nice object or beacon in that corner where Fields and Morrison meet. So this is one level above, like I just want to reiterate, when you drop off, it's at one level, and the bus drop is at a level below. Remember that this site has a lot of topography, so the building already serves as a retaining wall, and it helps with the transition right from a high to low. You can see how the bus drop off, the service is there, but there is a nice threshold of green buffering between the building and Morrison and the neighborhood. So that idea also can be used not only for a park, but that also could be stormwater management. The same thing where the baseball fields are, right? That's the more southern part, which is the lowest part of the site. That is a large portion I can use for that, too. So these are stacking diagrams. Again, this is just a concept to illustrate the main general idea of how do we want to stack the building. What you're looking at here is the lowest level, right? This is not the entry level. This is the bus drop off, one level below. In this level, once you get drop off, right, you could come in either from the entry to the right or from the entry to the left. The gym will be here, dining, some other, because service is here, PE support, which is physical education, and the lockers, right? So the idea is that the gym is in this very nice central location. The lockers are there, too, that it could be branched for. You can go to the stadium, and it's close by the softball field and baseball field. Everything is central in relationship to the gym. So one level up, this is the entry level. You can see how for the main offices, gym, you will be looking down to it. Remember, gym is a high base space, and then you see the center of the building, where the purple block is. That's where the auditorium music are, so you can actually have an entry to the auditorium at this level, and then the media is at this level, and it will be one level up, kind of like floating, reaching again to Fields Road. So once you go to this level, which it says level two, but remember, there is a ground level, this is technically level three. So more core academic spaces such as standard classrooms, labs, some of special ed, et cetera. Next. Then, right now, the concept is looking at, this is the top level, again, more of the core academics and similar spaces. Then the roof, and finally, the addition. That's around 35, 36,000. In this case, it's a three-story building that it will attach, and then it will finally become a J building, again, very close to Morrison and Fields. So these are verse I view, that what we want to do is actually go around the whole building clockwise, just to show you different corners of them. But you can see how the building becomes a really nice backdrop, right, from Fields. You enter, and it's very easy to see, right, where you're going. The main entry is very visible. You just loop around. All of the amenities can be reached from here. On one side, you have the media and library, and the other side is the entry, and your big boxes, which is auditorium and gymnasium. The linear plaza, what we talked about, that it comes from north, and it links all the way down to baseball, and again, it's cascading down. Remember that we're going down, and we are going to be incorporated in steps and ramps, right? This is all going to be ADA accessible, and it's going to be completely fluid. It's very clear to see how the stadium is in this northeast corner, right, calling Omega, but it's in a lower level. So as you come in from the main drop off, you'll be looking down at the bleachers, and the press box will be up there, right? But you will be looking out to the stadium. The same thing as the courts, the bus drop off, too, right from, so when you come from the main entry, it's a three-story building. But when you come from the back, it's actually a four-story building, right? It's kind of like that strategy of the building is doing just to manage the cascading down, those large deltas right from high to low. So this is actually from the southwest, meaning looking from the neighborhood towards Omega Drive. So you can see how the building, yeah, it reads as a four-story building. The bus drop off is parallel to the building. Very easy to incorporate a canopy, it's very safe. Everybody can just come in. There's a large area for the, for drop off. Service is there, but it's shielded with this, what we're calling, like I said, smaller, it's not a narrow park, but it's a linear park. And then finally, you can see closer to Fields where Vermeer Avenue is. There is this special space that is a lobby with a step, a step lobby, right, that connects you from a lower level to an upper level. And that's where the library is. You can connect to dining. You can see how this network of pedestrians and different levels are connected with this building that reaches into this corner of Fields and Morrison. Next. So this is looking from Fields Road, right, from So this is looking from Fields Road, right? From northwest. And again, you can see how this building will continue the edge from all the townhomes from the neighborhood, right? This will continue it, especially when the Phase Two will be completed. And suddenly we will open up and you will see a drop off. Very strong attention to that part, that media is between Morrison and the building too. So you can see how this edge is treated more as an urban building, especially this lane that's coming on to here. This is an eye level view from the corner of Morrison and Fields. So you can see how the building on this side is a four-story building and you can see the dialogue, right? From the four-story townhome to a four-story building. So the building is not going to be that much taller, right? It may be a little bit more, but not significantly taller. This corner can be sculpted. That blue box represents where the library, media center is. So you can see how it could be a very attic space and very visible from that side. It's still fifty feet away from the corner. So it's not just in the corner. It appears to be that way, right? Yes. So we want to spin you around the same way we did with the stills. But this is just a quick animation, just so you can have an idea of how to orient yourself. You can see the fields in the northeast area, the parking. Again, this is very conceptual, but it will give you an idea of the whole perimeter. Courts on the south, access to the bus, so all that bus loop and staff parking on the south around here. Then we will transition into a nat level view from Vermeer and culminating into what we're calling the gateway lobby. And finally coming back from Fields.
Thank you, Wilfredo. So just to summarize a few features of this option before we open up for question and answers. You know, this building is located at the northwest corner near Fields and Morrison Drive, as Wilfredo mentioned. We're looking at some fairly prominent locations for the auditorium and the gym, close to the entry. Parent drop off and student visitor parking lots are from Fields Road in Omega. Access to staff parking is from Omega Drive as well. Is the bus loop and service and delivery. The stadium complex is located in the northeast corner, the highest point of the site. And the softball and baseball fields are located at the lowest point of the site near the forest conservation area. The courts are located adjacent to the stadium. We have distributed parking. Parking again for students, visitors off of Fields Road and staff parking located off of Omega. But distributed parking for easy access to the fields and to the stadium. And as Wilfredo mentions, really is trying to create some very strong pedestrian connections, both to the site from the community as well as throughout the site with this linear plaza. And with that, I'd like to open it up for questions. I think we have a few written ones, Robbie, if you want to start with those. And if anyone has to ask a question, you can raise your hand and we'll chime in.
Yeah, I have a couple here. We've been answering a few of them, but a couple that we haven't been able to get to yet. So it says, how are the entrances from Fields Road and Omega Drive going to impact residents living on Fields Road? Especially with consideration of the volume of foot and road traffic, students, parents, buses, et cetera. Additionally, how will the safety of the residents, residents living on Fields Road during the school activities? Sports games, school events, et cetera, be impacted as well? Noise pollution, air pollution? So we are designing the school. And that's why we're like looking at the longer student drop off loop to keep the traffic off of Fields Road. We also have a longer drive out for the buses coming off Omega, trying to keep that away from the community. We will do a traffic study and it will also include a pedestrian study and determine if we need to make any adjustments to accommodate for any of that major concerns. But we don't anticipate any major issues with that because of the location of the site and without having the residential on Omega in the other side of Field. So anybody want to add to that? All right. It says, let's see, I cannot really tell how many windows are part of the building design. There's a way to show this. Derek or Jasmine or Wilfredo, you want to just kind of give an idea like where we're headed on that? Window sees something.
Yeah. So we will get into some of that next time, Rob. This, this one is really just very, very conceptual. So this is not meant to convey the number of windows or the size of openings or penetration or anything like that. This is really just trying to connect building and site features in an organized fashion and relate that back to the community. But next time, next time, we will begin to definitely get into window and penetration and things like that.
And as the design, as we, after we get through schematic design and the board approves our design, we will present to the community again. We have several, several times where we can come out to the community via this format and present the, how the design is progressing and you'll be able to see kind of where we're at and as those things advance through its design process. Let's see. So has a decision made on who's going to go to the new high school? Adrian, you, can you answer that one? Asking about the middle schools and.
So no, there has been no decision yet. Boundary studies usually occur about eighteen months or so before a new school opens or, or whenever a boundary study is done. In this case, because it is so many high schools that we're looking at, so chances are it will start before. My assumption is a minimum of two years before the school opens. Maybe a little bit more than that, but it'll be two years. And so at that point, prior to the boundary study beginning, there's an approved scope by the board. So once the scope is known, then we will start the process. So at this time, other than the, the high schools that have been identified to be relieved with this new school and that those high schools are Richard Montgomery, Gaithersburg, QO, Northwest and Wooton. Am I missing any? I don't think I'm missing any. Those have been identified. It doesn't mean that more high schools may come into the mix. And again, that's based on the board's scope. But right now, those are the high schools that have been identified.
Thank you very much. So there's some questions around parking. There's been a few around student parking, visitor parking. So this is always a challenge. We try to balance it out with all the other site amenities. So we, for high schools, we try to keep it around four to four twenty-five. So you're probably going to end up in that range somewhere. Depending on how, how the site ends up being developed, we'll figure that out. And then as far as students, the school will determine the amount of student parking they will allow. I've always seen it's for high schools, it's been around ten percent or so. They allow the permit parking. So that is determined at that point and they'll see, we usually require about ten percent of that parking for the staff. Sorry, it's ten percent of the total parking for staff. Actually, that's not, not ten percent of the total. It's what's the number I'm looking for? I'm sorry, ten percent of the total student staff or the total students is the amount we allow for staff. So first twenty-two hundred, that's two hundred and twenty staff. And so there'll be two, roughly two hundred and twenty parking spots for the staff and in some of the maintenance. So this one for Stand Tech, what is the best geographical orientation? Take full advantage of daylighting. What about for solar? What will, what will be on the roof? So I guess you can show them that one slide that kind of has that shown on there.
Well, Jasmine's getting that slide. The short answer is that the long axis, east-west. Long axis of a building in the east-west, which puts the, the long face of the building south-facing and north-facing. And that is the easiest daylight to control because it's higher or lower in the sky. We can, we know what to do with that or it's not in the sky at all on the north side. So long, long axis east-west or as Jasmine mentioned, slightly rotate up to fifteen degrees from that east-west axis. And so that's really optimal. As Wilfredo mentioned in this option, the long, the majority of the building is along that east-west axis. But we do have a leg that would turn north. And that is one of the potential drawbacks. It's not, the entire building is not in its optimal solar orientation, but there's a, there's a big chunk of it that is. And the other thing about the site plan is that there is solar orientation optimization also for athletics, right? So stadium are typically oriented north-south as are courts, as are baseball and softball. And so all of the soft, all of the athletic facilities are located in their optimum solar orientation. So the scheme does a pretty good job of getting everything where it wants to be. The only exception is that one little leg that turns north along Morrison right in there.
All right. Thank you. I guess we'll take one more here. So it says, with the stadium so close to the road, has thought been given to the need for high nets or fences and other ways to keep in balls and other, also for security. We, we have a similar design up against the road, like at Seneca. We haven't, we have the normal fencing that'll go around, around the site for the stadium area. We are not anticipating any high netting on this, on this project. So and then security, though, it'll, it'll, it'll be usually the main stadium area is completely fenced in. Will have a ten-foot fence around the tennis courts to keep the balls in there. And usually the baseball field is fenced in, but there's no guarantee that we will have to do that or not. So you guys want to jump into the next scheme there?
Actually, Robbie, if I can just jump in for one minute, I saw this question and I know that during the presentation, it was said a couple of times. So I just want to clarify because I'm assuming it'll be in the next one as well. You, the, the presentation has the building and then it has what you guys were calling sort of Phase Two. What we typically call a master planned addition. There is no Phase Two. This is not a phase project. The building is being constructed with a capacity of twenty-two hundred with a core for twenty-seven hundred. That means at some point in the future, the building could be built out to potentially twenty-seven hundred. But there is no Phase One and Phase Two. The, the building as you see it is what is being built and it's sometime in the future, if additional capacity is needed, it could be built out to twenty-seven hundred. So I just wanted to, what we, we call it a master planned future addition. That's what that is.
Thank you for clarifying that, Adrian.
Thank you.
Okay. Fred, I'd like to present option two.
All right. So I want to start by just reiterating that option two, the Fields Court Stadium, very, very similar location as option one, right? The main difference is how do we treat the, the edge along Morrison and where the building is located and the floor. So you can see that this building, again, the drop off, the main entry is very similar location except that this actually has a longer queue. Probably like ten more cars, longer queue than the other one. And the bus drop off is very similar. It moves a little bit south because the building is essentially is wider right in the center, but this concept really explored this idea of two bars or two branches that go along east-west and reach into the neighborhood, right? And it opens up and you can see how the solar leg actually rotates and aligns with that large open area and creates similar open space on the other side. So this building is two bars or branches connected by a spine of program that is your main circulation and your heart of the school. The addition is on the northern bar. Again, future if needed additions on the upper bar. So essentially what you're doing is extending one of those bars. This scheme also gives you the opportunity to extend more of the sidewalks, the, all of the spaces, right? So you can start from what we're calling the Green Bell on the south, right? It could become a nice walkway that branches and connects to the same linear plaza that we had on the other scheme, but also from Rockwell, you could have a, a connection from the other side of the large green space. And finally, from Vermeer, you can wrap around. So kind of interesting to create this pedestrian connection that ends finally into our north side linear plaza that connects all of the amenities together. So the, the building again is, yeah, zooming in into the actual ground floor plan. Main office in entry, very similar location. The idea is that you come in from that linear plaza along queue and then you're coming in and you're welcome with this spine that ends up in this outdoor space that is down one level. So you're kind of like looking down into it and it's also a space that connects into that edge. So this actually, this green edge from between Morrison and the building is a little bit wider than the first scheme. So this, by doing this shape that is wider, it gives you an opportunity that the building is shorter and then you can take advantage of this element to be more of a passive part. It also could be a stormwater management element. It could be created and create a very interesting buffer and transition from the neighborhood into the building. The gym is in the same location. Again, it's also at the lower level. So you're coming in, you're looking down into it at the lower level, very similar idea of lockers connecting. The media center in this case is in the south, so it has this nice view to the fields and also is aligned perfectly with that nice green lawn on the other side of the neighborhood. Auditorium also entrance in the middle of the building, very similar to the other scheme. And the idea is to make this very interesting, whatever program is on, close to Morrison, it's a very interesting and something that is very interactive with the neighborhood. So again, looking at what we're calling the stacking diagrams from the lower level, right? This is the bus drop off level. Similar, you have gym, dining and PE, right? PE is where the lockers and other physical education support will be very central. The idea, it could be branching to everywhere, right? Stadium is very close. Fields are very close. Dining in this case is facing the, that outdoor protected courtyard. As you move up, some, at the edge, main entry and as you turn right, that's where the main office is. Control point. And when you come in again, you have this really nice spine that you have the gym looking down at the gym. And the auditorium is actually at this level and then the media center. So you can imagine all this public amenities at this level. So in this, this is where all the public events happen. As you move off, you can see how those two bars or branches, the roof stops, right? So there is actually outdoor between them. So you can really see the two of them and natural light can come in and you can actually loop around the buildings. So these two bars are connected and you can actually loop around. So the, the higher you go into the building, the more it becomes core academic, standard classrooms and labs with some terraces, right? The idea is to take advantage of maybe this intermediate space to have art rooms and looking back into the stadium. Just imagine one of those terraces looking back. It's almost like nice platform press box that it could be used, right? For seeing the game. Next. Then the roof, you can see how you see the two bars are read. And by the way, this aligns both of the bars or branches I, with the ideal solar heat gain and glare orientation. And next, you can see how the possible future addition might add up there. Even by adding that, you still have plenty of room and buffer space between the neighborhood and the building. that, you still have plenty of room and buffer space between the neighborhood and the building. So we're going to do the, the same thing. We just want to walk around. So remember that Option T was kind of like an L shape that hugged the drop-off. In this case, you will have more like a clean bar than you will see a three-story bar. And then from the other side, you ended up having a four-story. You can see how this drop-off is a little bit longer, right? It's slightly longer, but very similar concept, right? You can engage the linear plaza right from fields, looking down into the stadium, which will be lower, and the linear plaza, again, very clear connection with cascade down all the way to the softball and to the forest conservation. So turning from Omega Drive, looking from southeast, this is really work from the entry of the buses, staff parking, and service, right? So remember that you come in low as well, so one level below, bus drop-off, parallel to the building, really very close to the building. It's very safe that way, and then you have that little edge of the two bars, right? That is where you enter, and you could actually see the stadium, and it could be a vertical connection from the building as well, right, from coming down. So as you move from the south way, this is really from the neighborhood, from Morrison looking into the building, you can start to see that outdoor space in between the bars and how one of the legs aligns with the main green space, and then just to maximize that protected space. The thing is very interesting, right, that dynamic of having that nice protected space that ends up in this linear part, which is a little bit widening this often, and takes you from fields all the way to the, to the baseball field in this case. So looking from Fields Road, you can see that same idea, right, from the linear part, it's cascading down. Morrison drops, right, keeps going down, so the park will do the same thing. Remember, it's a, it's a large area of green mediating between the neighborhood building. Again, this could be an element that is passive part, but also stormwater management element. It could integrate a lot of things. So this is a view, just, you can see an eye-level view from that main green space from the neighborhood right from Morrison. So you can see how the building is three stories on the left, but it becomes four stories, right? So that protected space is four. You can imagine the scale of the building, very, very similar to the heights of the, of the town hall. And we're going to do a very quick animation, just looping around the same way we did with the steals, but you can see the adjacencies are very similar. The main difference again is that edge and the two bars connected by a spine and by an outdoor terrace. So as you move out down into the green area, you can see how that bar, where the media center is, is actually looking into this side, is aligned, and finalized to see that center space between the bars, and finally coming down into this side.
Thanks, Fredo. Just to summarize a few features of this option, this school is, is more centrally located in the, in the Zone A with that green buffer between the campus and the Morrison Drive. Again, similar to the previous scheme, Torian Gym have pretty prominent locations within the building, very close to the main entrance. Just like the last scheme, parent drop-off, student parking off of Fields Road with staff parking and buses off, and service off of Omega. And then this, the location of the stadiums and baseball and softball fields and courts are the same as Option One. This one has probably stronger community connections, maintain some of those relationships between the green spaces on the Crown Community and the shape of the bars, as well as accessies off of the Green Belt. With that, we want to, again, open it up for questions.
Yeah, thank you very much. I do want to say that I, you know, the, the stadium is going to be a great place for the community to come in, use the track to walk. We leave all our high schools open for that use, and there's that connection, you know, from the community to walk into there and, and use these spaces. The tennis courts will always be open door. They're, they're not a, an area that's, we don't use the lighting on those areas, so after dark, they're closed down, but they could use them throughout all daylight times. So let's get into some questions. There's, there's been a couple of questions about the roofs and the solar, and also about the green roofs. I just want to address the solar. We, we will look at some of those options, but that's usually done after the building is complete, and we, we have special programs that look at certain schools and will consider the use on certain buildings. We will design, the building will be structurally designed to carry solar panels as needed. So the green roofs, you want to answer that, Dirk, maybe just a little discussion on what you're thinking there?
You're mute.
Sorry about that. So the, these are concepts. So what you're seeing in representing a green roof really just represents an opportunity for a green roof. Some of that outdoor space could be used for learning, outdoor learning. We've done roof terraces many places, but it also could be stormwater management or, or things of that nature. So could be a garden. So depending on what the needs are of the program, as we really get into the design of it, we're just trying to indicate areas of opportunity for green roofs. We would not probably put any of that on the top, reserving that, Rob, as you say, for perhaps future football tech panels, the places that would be accessible and protected for students. Could be a green roof.
And those green roofs are then, it's, the calculations are used for our stormwater management. There was a question earlier about that. So we do some surface treatment with bio ponds, and also there's, you know, treatment through the, the green roof, but we also have, we will consider pervious paving, and like I was saying, bio ponds, and then there'll be some underground filtration systems that will treat the water before it's discharged.
We also do have Sean on the call. Rob, if, if Sean must unmute himself and contribute anything there, Sean?
Sure. Um, yeah, at this point, everything is really up for grabs. We get a lot of bang for our buck out of bio retention areas, so we'll try to get as many of those in the green spaces as we can. We might even put in some landscape islands within the parking areas, just to take more advantage of whatever space we can get. Pervious pavement, we will have to get the geotech to see if we can get some infiltration rates, but that will also be a prime objective. The stadium field will also be a synthetic turf so that it can treat itself, and then if we still have other requirements that are not met, then we would look for underground treatment.
Yeah, thank you, Sean.
Hey, Rob, we have one person raising their hand. You want to, should we go to them?
All right, go ahead.
Jennifer Young?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I want to ask if you might consider connecting the parking lots through somehow opening the, what I know, I guess now is a pedestrian walkway, either like, yes, that, that walkway, maybe during the, not during the daytime, so that, you know, students might be able to use it, but connecting it for, you know, after school is out. And I asked, I asked this question because, you know, being a parent who has come to student events after school to go to, say, a softball game at another school, and you go to one parking lot, and then you discover, oh, that's not the parking lot, but softball field, and you have to completely drive outside of the school and try to find where the softball parking lot is, go, have to go into a different entrance, or that parking lot is full for the play, and then you have to figure out how to drive all the way around to, you know, Omega Drive to go in the other parking lot. I'm, I'm just wondering, like, for, you know, flow purposes and thinking about kind of how this school is used by not only the participants of this school, but everybody who's going to be come and visit it through the parents, the, you know, opposing teams who are coming to play, to think about maybe if there's a way to connect that space as a roadway, and even if it's not used during the, you know, during the day, to block that off during the day, but to open it up, you know, afterwards, because it's, it is very difficult. I've gone to several high schools where, you know, they don't have that kind of connection, and it's confusing and hard to kind of figure it out. So I just raise that as an issue that maybe you think about.
Yeah, thank you for that question, and that's something we consider. There, there's been a lot of concern here, like to keep the service drive away from having access coming down Morrison. We would, if we would do that, we would limit the use of that with a gate, and it could be also used for maybe emergency access, and we may have to do that, you know, with the county requirement. So that's something we will consider. I think it's a, it's a good idea, and I'm, I'm with you. I have two kids in high school at Northwest right now, and I understand what it's like to ride around looking for a parking spot. So, thank you very much. So we got anybody else there with a question, or should I jump in here?
Not right now.
Let's see, just want to grab a couple of these. There's a lot of stormwater questions. There's a question about the grading of the site, and we do have some of those slides in a previous work session, but the, I guess just quickly, the, the site grades down. What do we say is like 40 feet from, from Fields Road all the way down to, at the base of the baseball field?
Yes.
Is that correct? Yeah, so we have, as you can, if you've been around there, you can see the slope on that. So it's, it's a challenge for this site for us to design around, but so far it's been, the designs that have been presented have been very useful of that grading adjustment. Is there anything else you want to say, Dirk or Jasmine or Fredo about the grades?
Not the moment. I mean, I wonder whether Sean might want to just generally speak to stormwater. Sean, anything to add to what you've said, and just in terms of general flow and management strategy with respect to the site concept?
Right. So for a quality man, stormwater management, it's kind of what I had spoken to before, but the other component to stormwater is the quantity management. So with everything kind of sloping down towards the south, what will end up happening is we'll put in some large underground storage pipes or maybe a large concrete vault over where the baseball and softball fields are, so that all the stormwater that's running down will get caught, and it'll, it'll slowly trickle out so that we're not overloading the, the stream and causing any downstream erosion. But otherwise, the slope's not going to have too much of an impact on us. We'll have some retaining walls on, you know, maybe we'll have some bio swells if, if the grade allows, but otherwise, no, nothing too crazy with, with the slopes.
Thank you, Sean.
And then just generally, as you would on any site, there's always a, there's always an effort to balance portions of the site that are cut lower, and then whatever you cut here, you fill there, so that you can overall balance the distribution of material on the site. And so as we sculpt the site, as we set these final grades, as we look at slopes, north to south and east and west, from corner to corner of the site, we will always be seeking to balance the site overall. So final grades and final elevations will be reflecting this overall strategy to balance cut and fill on the site. We don't want, we don't want to haul off a lot of dirt. That can be very expensive.
Yeah. So here's a question about the addition. So what are the cost differences between leaving space for an addition as shown here, or constructing a shell to be completed later, as we have planned some other of the MCPS projects? So, Adrian or DJ, I mean, the, the cost will all depend on the budget, but-
So, Rob, so, so I can answer it. So, you know, one of the things that we look at when we, when we do construction projects is looking at the capacity, you know, what the needs are, in this case, of the surrounding clusters. And so we build with a little flexibility. In some, sometimes if it's a small master planned addition, it may make sense. In this case, it's almost 300, almost, we're 2,200 going to 27, that's 500 seats, unless we really see, as we get closer to construction, that those seats are really needed. From a fiscal perspective, it is expensive to do it, even though there are some cost savings. From a state aid perspective, we wouldn't get paid for those additional seats because they wouldn't be warranted. And so it really doesn't make sense. We sometimes do it with elementary schools because it is just a couple of additional classrooms, but again, in this case, we're talking about a whole lot of classrooms, 500 seats. You know, you're, you're talking about, about 20 classrooms. So it, it just, it just wouldn't make sense to do it if it's not necessary, not right now.
All right, thank you, Adrian. I knew you'd be able to explain that well. Let's see here, there's, so we're talking about the landscaping along Morrison. So I think we had a slide at one time, and I think it was one of these, right? It had some trees along there. So they're just want to talk about the tree line down Morrison and that ends at the baseball fields. It created a nice separation from homes, you know, in the school. So, yeah, you can see, we plan on planting a decent amount of trees along there. It depends on which option we end up with, but there will be a tree line, I believe.
Yeah, and I'm just, I just reiterate, this is very schematic at this time. I mean, that's one of the, one of the strongest points of this, this option that I kind of appreciate the most is that green belt in between the community and the school. I think it's really nice. How that's going to look, like, we, we're not totally sure yet, but I mean, this is definitely an opportunity to do stormwater management or landscaping options, or nice little plazas. I think this is a really, really great little buffer you guys designed here. I think it'd be really nice to see it come to fruition.
Yeah, we always, you know, sometimes it looks like there's a bunch of space. This is a tight site for a high school, and with the requirements for doing some of the surface treatments, you end up using a lot of that space, like Seth was referring to, for, you know, some of the bio retention facilities, but they are planted, they have plants in them, and we plant trees around them also. So plenty of landscaping on this project. There's a question about the, the stadium, the field use, and the type of infill mix on the turf. So we, we don't use the rubber on the turf anymore. We use a organic material, and as things, as new products come out, we look at those and we consider them, but we have moved away from using the tiny rubber pieces on the turf. In the, the field use, so that, that's going to be highly used, and that's part of the reason why we, we want to make an artificial turf, and multiple sports, sports will be on there. There'll be field hockey, soccer, football, you know, boys and girls, lacrosse. There's, all the track events will be held there. So there's a, a lot being used in that, in that area.
It'll also be used, Rob, for physical education classes and things like that. So it will be heavily used.
It's really nice. I mean, if you can spin that design maybe on a different slide. And if anybody gets a chance to kind of drive past Seneca Valley High School, you'll see us a similar type of plaza to where you can, when you, when you're standing up here at the school, you can just see everything on the field and it makes it a nice, nice area to, to congregate, you know, during a game. After a game, there's a lot of open space there. So it really make, it's a really nice design here. Let's see, what else do we have? Talking about stormwater. See, I think some questions about the schools. Well, we will, I'll post that on the website. Some of the high schools that are being considered so that it's clear. Do we, we have that in a previous, I don't think we have that list in the previous work session.
Yeah, we have the, the slide that shows where the Crown Site is and those five adjacent schools.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. So that is in a previous slide. It's, it's just a map of the area. But we'll try to get that list up there. I have to find out which, which section, there's some dropdown areas to put it in. I'll look for that. What do you want to jump into next here? I think we're talked about sports using the facility. Oh, will there be any restrooms concession stands on the south part of the site adjacent to the ball fields? We'll have to look into that. We, some some schools, we do that and some we, we can use the school facilities by having an exterior door close to the stadium for use for public, for public events. So that's similar to like Seneca Valley High School has a public use area right off of the plaza. And that's probably what will happen here, depending on the location of the building. So, but we will look into that and consider that. Since the area site is currently woods, farmland, whether it be a berm or area of separation to keep it looking woodsy. Kind of talked about that with the landscaping. We, we, we want to continue that feel with the trees along that, especially along Morrison for that separation. So this is the program call for adult change station within the facility. Yeah, we'll, we will have that in the facility. I think that's about it. I'm going to jump into the next slide there.
That's just our encouragement.
So at this point, we just want to again, just reiterate to, to the people who are on the call, the community members who gave up your time again, your evening tonight. And throughout all this process, we are where we are because of your feedback. And your feedback also will take us to the next step. And so again, thank you so much. After tonight, as I, as I mentioned earlier, we will meet with MCPS. And we will decide, they will decide more accurately, which of the two schemes will be taken forward. And that scheme will be developed further in response to feedback received tonight. And we will share that with you next time. And we will also begin to maybe take a shot at what the building could look like from an architectural character standpoint. We'll have more developed floor plans of whichever scheme is chosen next time. We could even use a portion of that meeting to talk about some of the sustainable design strategies that we might incorporate into the chosen scheme. And then maybe also talk about things like how the school might operate from a safety and security standpoint as well. And so, and then after that, then we would hustle our way toward a schematic submission by the end of January, early February. And so again, that's the path that we're on. And again, thank you so much for helping us out. We have one meeting to go and we really appreciate if you could come back two weeks from tonight and to see the fruits of your, for the fruits of your work. And so again, thank you on behalf of the team. And with that, I turn it back over to you, Rob.
Yeah, I would also say thank you very much for everybody's input. It has, it has helped us greatly. We take what our knowledge, architects, and then the community input, and it really just becomes a great design for everybody. If there's any questions you have, please just go to that link. My email address is on there. Send me an email. I answered a couple of questions today from some, some community members. So I can guarantee I'll get to it immediately, but you know, just keep poking at me and especially before you're the next meeting. So that I can, you know, address some of those comments before we go into that December 16th meeting. Thank you all very much. Thank you for Stan Tech and Keller and our group here from MCPS. I'll be on the call tonight and thank you for the community.
Okay. Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.